I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Ms. Seberg.
Here.
Ms. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we have personnel ratification added to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Yes. Dr. Saunders tonight.
Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick, and members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight to recognize our Manassas City Public Schools' aspiring leaders cohort from the 15-16 school year. That would be last year. To date, you might remember, for the last three years, we've been running the aspiring leaders cohort. We have teachers and other members of our staff who come voluntarily in the summer for a two-day seminar. And then we spend one day a month throughout the school year talking about leadership, looking at ways that they can become both leaders in their school, at the teacher level, to build that capacity, as well as working with some of those staff members who look forward to being administrators in the schools at some time. To date, we've had more than 40 Manassas City Public Schools employees participating as aspiring leaders. Some have moved on into leadership positions here in Manassas City Public Schools. Others have gone to other districts. And still, we have many that are in our schools and at our grades, in our grade levels, in our classrooms, supporting, teaching, and learning throughout the division. So that's very exciting for us. The Institute focuses on preparing instructional personnel to become effective leaders in Manassas City Public Schools. And our candidates range from those teacher-leader opportunities in schools to those looking for administrators, to become administrators. The class of 15-16 included 10 participants. And tonight, I believe I have four of those participants here to be recognized. And so I'm going to call them forward. And we have Pedro Hernandez. Al's not here to organize us, or wasn't.
No.
There she is. Oh, okay. She said, "Stay here." Rania Hamad. I need to leave this to the PR department, right? Yaslin Flores-Norad, is Yaslin here? Okay. And we also have Sharla Walker here as well. And again, so these are three members of our cohort from 15-16. And again, I want to thank them for their dedication, their leadership, and their continued leadership in our school division. So, thank you.
I have one more spotlight, not the one you all think. Girl named Sidney Radford, is she in here tonight? Happy birthday, dear. Thank you very much for spending your birthday with us. I know you had a lot of choices, and this was your first one. So we really appreciate it. So start bugging your mother to take you out to dinner whenever she's done, or even before she's done, okay? Board committee reports. Mr. Williams, academics?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht, education support?
I think we walk about a block or two away, the new Baldwin speaks for itself.
Is it almost done?
I think it's almost done.
Is it? That's so exciting. Mrs. Sebeski, policy?
Yes, so the Policy Committee met on December the 8th, and we'll be discussing the policies later on in the agenda.
Wonderful. Look forward to hearing from you.
I'm sure you do.
Finance, Mr. Albrecht.
No report.
And Mr. Bushnell, anything on personnel, sir?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate your report. Board member comments. Ms. Alonso, we're starting with you down there on that end. We kind of switched things up. Don't know why, but we did that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, wait. Okay. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Sebeski. I know I haven't known you for that long, but I'm so grateful for the opportunity. Like, I know it takes a lot, a lot of confidence and trust to appoint this position to someone, and I'm so grateful that you saw something in me, you believed in me, and I will forever be grateful for that. Thank you so much. And I want to congratulate Mr. Bushnell. We will miss you so much. And also, I want to say, this past Friday, we have a group at Osborne, which goes, with Mr. Morton, one of our counselors, which goes by the name Voces Latinas, which, if you don't know, it means Latina voices. And we did outreach at Metz Middle School with young girls, because we want to, we want to address a problem before it becomes a problem. So we just went over there, and we talked to the young girls about how they can find their voice, and be successful, and not have to fit into the mold that everyone wants them to be. So, yeah, very proud of that.
Thank you. We're very proud of you for that. That's wonderful work. Thank you very much, and for justifying the reason that you're sitting up here. Thank you very much. Ms. Maddick?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to thank Ms. Sebeski for giving, also, for giving me this opportunity, that you really put together a great program. And I think that if this keeps on happening, I think that students can really make change. And it's, it's not just a great opportunity for me, but it gives a chance for every single voice in the entire school system to be heard. And I'm, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, so we really, really thank you for that. And Mr. Bushnell, I'm sad to see you leave. It's been a pleasure, and a ple, uh, excuse me. It really has been serving on this board, and I'm, I'm really sad to see you leave. I would just like to say that the next time I'll see you guys, it'll be 2017, and that's our graduation year! We're excited! And I have been in the Manassas City Public School system since I was in kindergarten, so that'll be 13 years of Manassas City Public School for me. And it really is a privilege to graduate from this school system. It has turned me, I believe, into a great person, and I wouldn't be here without all the staff and all the people in this school system. So I'd really like to thank everyone that has helped me come this far. And last but not least, I hope that everyone has a wonderful and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're proud of you, too.
Thank you.
Mrs. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to do a shout-out to the Osborne High School academic team for their 9-0 season, competing against classic bowls in our area. They're going to compete at the district level, at Battlefield High School on Wednesday, and hopefully onto regionals, and who knows what beyond that. Their taking on It's Academic will be aired on Saturday, January 7th, at 10:30 in the morning on NBC4. Also, last Saturday, Manassas City Public Schools hosted auditions at Osborne High School for the All-District Honor Band. This is where band directors, they gather to assess the talents of middle school and high school students to form an all-district honor band. And they rehearse, and they perform a concert for the community. I want to congratulate all the students at Metz and at Osborne that made the district band. Also, thank you to the volunteers that carried that off, because there was hundreds of people there. Lots of kids wandering the halls, but we had students directing them to the right ways. Our registration went smoothly. Everybody was complimenting us, and Osborne really showed our districted. Pam, I want to thank you for your six years of dedication to the Manassas City Public Schools and to the people in them. I know you're going to continue your good work, and I'm not sad, I'm excited for you. And good luck to you on the Manassas City Council. Art, I first remember meeting you when you came to a J.B.P.T.A. meeting, I don't know, 10 years ago, something like that. And I was just very grateful that we had such a thoughtful person that would come out and speak to our little PTA, of maybe five people sitting around the table. And I thank you for that, and thank you for your guidance and all your hard work for our kids and our schools. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Miss Ma'am, Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to congratulate our aspiring leaders, who we celebrate tonight, and continue to celebrate as you keep excelling at all that you do, and inspiring others to do the same. So, thank you. I also wanted to, we're very excited about Baldwin. Obviously, it's been long in the coming, and I just wanted to say to the staff, the teachers, the administration, everybody who's made this happen, and made it happen on time, and for those who will be, you know, doing some work over the holidays to make sure those kids come back to a perfect place, we thank you. We're excited about it. We'll be doing some tours next week, I understand, and ribbon-cutting, and all kinds of celebrations, so we hope to see people really celebrate that new school. That's just so nice to drive by and park at the train station every morning and just look at it. I, too, just want to wish everybody in our family, in our community, in the schools, a happy, safe holiday season. It's a time to reflect upon everything we've accomplished this year, and to think forward about all the things we continue to aspire to accomplish in the coming years. So I look forward to working with everybody to make sure that we keep moving the needle where we want it to go. Lastly, I want to, you know, everybody wants to save the limelight for the two that deserve it most tonight. You know, when you come into the school board, it's, you don't know what you really signed up for, right? I'm not going to lie. Had I not had the folks here help navigate and continue to navigate these waters, gosh knows where I'd be. And I have to say, you know, Pam and Art, you have been inspirations, you have been mentors, you have been friends, you have been people that have been fun to laugh at and to laugh with. So with that, I haven't figured out if I think you're both crazy, A, for serving for 26 years, or B, for continuing to go on a journey of your own, Pam, but I just have to personally thank you, not only for your service to this community, but your friendship and your guidance. And don't worry, I'll continue to be asking you both questions as I continue to charter the waters. And I just want to, this week, we lost an American hero and a former boss of mine, John Glenn. And when, you know, I think of him, I mean, he always literally reached for the stars. It didn't matter what stage in life he was at and where he was, he just continued to keep wanting to go and do more. So I say to both of you, you know, go wherever you want to go, enjoy whatever you're doing, stay with us, because you're always going to be with us here, and best wishes to you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. First, I'll do it, ten stole my thunder. Ms. Sidney Radford, who I know very well through her mother, her Facebook posts, her talking about her, happy birthday. Don't listen to Tim, don't come back, you know. Have fun at home. Anyhow, I want to let you know that your mom and dad are very proud of you, and your mom has not only told me what a great athlete you are, which is awesome, but more importantly, what a great person you are and how bright you are. So I pray that you continue to listen to your parents, keep working hard, keep making her proud of you and us proud of you. So happy birthday, and thank you for being here. Thanks for all the comments, all the great comments earlier. I like to play my comments beforehand, and usually I do, but it's been so hectic that I wrote out a bunch of stuff right before the meeting. So if I forget to say something, I apologize, but, you know, here it goes. Congratulations to all the honorees tonight, the ones who are still here. Thank you for engaging in our community. We can't survive and be a great community without you, so thank you for, for being here. Thank you to those in the audience who are here, and here, Mayor Mayr back there, Ms. Williams back there, Mr. Hal Hamlin, thank you all for being here. You could be anywhere else, so thank you for coming out tonight. The Osborne bands have a holiday gift-wrapping booth in Manassas Mall near Sears. I went online and printed this off the Osborne website. I believe it says that gift-wrapping started on the 25th of November and ends on December 24th. So if you need anything gift-wrapped, please go over there and get it wrapped. And Ms. Seberg may know more about this than I do, so she can chime in if she, she wants to. And I think they need volunteers as well. So if you have time, volunteer, go help out and get your gifts wrapped there, help our bands out. Onto the main event. As has been stated previously, this is the last school board meeting for Ms. Sebeski and Mr. Bushnell, and they will both be missed. Ms. Sebeski and I were elected to the board, it was six and a half years ago, and man, I had hair back then, you know, see what this job does to you? It's crazy. We were strangers when we joined the board, and I'm happy to say we're now friends. I'll miss her banter with Tim, believe it or not. More importantly, I'll miss her dedication, her hard work, and her commitment to do her best for our students and our city. I am proud of her for stepping out on faith and taking a chance in running for election to the council. It wasn't an easy decision for her, more power to her, and I'm proud of her for doing that. I'll be her biggest cheerleader, next to her husband, and I'll wish her well in her work in the council, and thank her for her service to the school board in Manassas, and I look forward to the great things you're going to do there. Now for Mr. Bushnell. Mr. Bushnell is, how should I put it, unique. How else to describe somebody who gives more than 25 years of his life to serve on a school board? I've learned a lot about him over the past few years. He loves baseball, as do I. He loves his family, and he truly loves and is devoted to his wife, which is awesome. He also loves and is truly passionate about education and the kids in the city of Manassas. After his many years of serving, you would think he'd be just passionate about his job, and just kind of chilling and not relaxing, you know, not doing too much. But, I mean, he has a suitcase here, he ran from the airport, you know, like, you know, some people used to do hurling through the airport, I'm sure. But if something came up during my tenure on the board that might adversely, adversely affect our students, Mr. Bushnell will be the first person to lead the charge to address it. And I love the fact that he's not just reactive in instances like that, but he's proactive. He championed things such as our pre-K program, and footsteps to brilliance was something that he was very passionate about, and that we've implemented, and we're all thankful, and I'm thankful to him for his leadership on that. Thank you, Mr. Bushnell, for your compassion, your humility, and your passion for our kids. No one will likely ever top your longevity as a school board member, but we can only hope to match your concern for our kids, our staff, and our superintendent. Your wit, your editing, and as Scott Albrecht may agree with, your sometimes curmudgeonly disposition...
People are always confusing Scott and me.
...will be missed, as will your insight. You are irreplaceable. I just hope that we, as a board, can make you as proud of us as we are of you. I miss you. And I'll end with another note. In this hectic, stressful, joyful, exciting time of year, please take a moment to truly see and spend time with those you love, and pay attention to those around you. This time of year is very painful for some due to tragedies. This time of year can be painful because people have lost a loved one recently, or this season reminds them of the loved one they've lost. So lots of folks are happy and running around, but other folks aren't as happy. A close friend of our family, who lives in Manassas, committed suicide around this time of year, which makes me especially mindful of the mental state of my friends and family during the season, and I hope you all do the same. In addition to the stress of the holiday season, there has been an uptick in hate crimes and other incidents recently in the last month or so. I pray that we all, as a community and as a nation, take this holiday season, reflect on the blessings we have, spend time with loved ones and family, and commit to making this world a better place. Because as long as you have breath in your body and are able to move, you have the ability to change yourself, change your community, and change the world. Happy holidays, everyone, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll start with a couple of things we just talked about a minute ago, with It's Academic and Undefeated, and we talk about what's right in the city of Manassas, and there's a great example of what we're doing right. For anybody who happens to be out actually listening to this tape, please get the word out, we are doing the right things, and I'm sure they'll do well if they move on through the roles. I was intrigued when we talked about the aspiring leaders program, because I spent three hours today, our CEO of our company, we had a leadership, couple-hour mission, and it really, her whole discussion was her view of leadership. And it was really interesting, because it's all around a foundation of leading from where you are. You don't have to be the type, the superintendent, you don't have to have the title, you don't have to be the building administrator. Everyone is capable of leading. So the fact that we have grassroots efforts to build our leadership really talks about we're embracing where the rest of corporate America already is, and I suspect a lot of academia hasn't caught up to us yet. And now for my friends. And I thought about this, and I had a whole bunch of stuff, and I was going to try to filibuster, so that we'd have to have a special meeting, and this way it wouldn't be the last meeting. But I knew Tim would just smack me. So I'm not.
Thank you. I don't want to be a bully.
Pam, it's been a great six and a half years. You have been enthusiastic, energetic, and just a wonderful person to work with. I've truly appreciated it. Our loss is the council's gain. You consistently have looked out for the children of Manassas, what's right for them, the citizens of Manassas, and you lead with your heart, and thanks for everything. But you do have a final thing. You got to tell someone where the defibrillator is and give them a key.
I'll take care of that.
Art, we've served for 16 and a half years together, and I really could go on and on about incredible stories, especially if I went back to the Gillum Bowl. Little-known fact, the Naval Academy played a football game at Osborne High School, and Art and I set it up. It's been fantastic. You're a friend, you've been a mentor, you've been a role model. I'm going to miss you, my friend. Good luck to you and Roseanne. There's always room at the end.
Monday night is the walkthrough of Baldwin, 5 o'clock. Tuesday is our ribbon-cutting at 11 o'clock. Love to have as many people there as possible. Monday at 5, the walkthrough, if you haven't seen it, which most people have not, you're missing out. We had a little get-together earlier tonight. I'd like to thank our former mayor, our current Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. Waldron, for being here and for being out there. I would like to thank Mr. McGee, Jack McGee, former board member, and Ilka Chavez, former board member. There were no other former board members there, were there? Okay. Council people...
Well, the mayor, the former mayor probably served on the school board, Art, too.
He served at everything. He can't make up his mind what he wants to do. He was our mayor, he was school board member, he was council member, I mean, you know, you can't do everything with Doug, you'd be here all night. Our city council, Mr. Allison, Mr. Wolf, and Mrs. Bass were out there to celebrate these two, and for good reason. Our future board member, Ms. Williams, who has a big shoes to fill, was there and is here tonight, and we appreciate that. I didn't miss any electeds, did I? Pam, I'm going to start with you. And everybody else is going to have to realize, they're going to have to pick up the slack for you, for the amount of work you do, for the amount of wisecracks you take. It will have to go on to everybody else. Like I told somebody else, my level of wisecracks will not diminish, they'll just have to be spread out. I can't do any more with Scott, because he already takes the second amount most, because he sits here and, well, it's easy, he's old, he's going to be the old member. But all of the work you do, we're going to have to somehow make up for that. It's going to be very, very difficult. Robin, you screwed up, you won, sorry. Because there is a lot, and when anything needs to be done, it seems we turn to Pam. I was reading in our BSBA pamphlet we got the other day about members of distinction, and I think it's 125 people or so of the thousands that are able to receive that. We have three people here, but I'm not going to talk about the other two, because they're not important tonight. Pam's gotten it six years, or seven, because she does so much all the time, and we're going to have to make up for that, and it's going to be very difficult. Thankfully, she's not leaving us. If I need advice, or help, or her opinion, she'll be there to give it to me. Unfortunately, she's not going very far. If I don't need her help, her advice, or her opinion, she'll be, still be there to give it to me, whether I want it or not. I've known you off and on for, I don't know, most of my life, and I am quite thankful that you are moving on to a lesser office, maybe? Because I think the most important thing that's done in this city is educate our kids. And I know how hard it is for you to leave this board, because this is where your heart is, I know that, but you also needed to do what you needed to do for our community. And your selflessness speaks volumes. And I'm going to miss having you here. Again, I know the, when I'm harvesting, the phone's going to ring, and it's going to say, "Sebeski," and, "Oh, crap, what did I do wrong?" Because I am the senior board member between us, and she makes me do things right, because I want to do things the way Timmy would do things, and she makes me do things the way the chairman should do things. Sometimes I get away with doing them the way I want to, but not very often. And I'm just very glad that you're not going very far. Everybody else is going to have to pick up slack, and I appreciate your being here very much. And it's a little bit easier, because you're still going to be here. Now the harder one, because he's not going to be here anymore. For 10 and a half years, I've had a guy that I could always look for to help me. I could not be doing what I'm doing now, whether I'm doing it well, or poor, or whatever it is, without Art Bushnell. 26 and a half years, he's sat here, or in a trailer. And he never looked to do anything else. He was here for our children. He's still here for our children. I am really, really, really glad that Mr. Albrecht won his election, because this is such a void we're going to have now. You've got so much history, so much experience, so much expertise, so much love, that it is really going to be impossible to fill that in, on this board, and in this job, in this life. We've never, we haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always agreed to respect each other, and we've normally agreed. We've normally voted the same way, not always, but normally, and we didn't, when we didn't, it didn't matter. He still respected everybody's vote, he still respected the way other people thought. When Roseanne got sick, I thought for sure we were going to lose him. And he stuck it out. And he worked so hard at his old job, his new job, his unpaid job as a caregiver, and being a school board member. And you're so due, so deserving to stop now. And I hope you're okay with it, but I don't think you are. And I hope that you can get past not being a part of this. And I hope that the rest of us can continue on doing what you started for us twenty-six and a half years ago and keep you satisfied for what we're doing and keep moving in the right direction. And personally, I just thank you for everything, for being there for me through everything and making me a better person. And I'm going to miss you terribly. Thank you very much. And you shouldn't be afraid to tell people you love them, and I love both of you very Go ahead, Pam, knock yourself out.
Thanks a lot. I'm going to start with lighthearted things. I want to congratulate the seniors over at Osborne that I've started seeing posts that are being accepted to their colleges and colleges of choice, including Iris, who told me tonight that she's been accepted to Old Dominion, which is one of her top choices. So congratulations. Because that's what this is all about. It's about that destination. For those of you who brought earlier about Osborne's wrapping booth, I've been involved with the band for a long time. Haven't had kids in the band for several years, but every year I still volunteer some time to help them. So if you would like to have me wrap your Christmas presents, because mine at home may not get wrapped at this point, I'll be at the wrapping booth on Friday from around nine, nine-thirty until about five this Friday. So please come and support the band. It's their largest fundraiser, and it's just a great service that they provide to a lot of people, I think. Art, I want to thank you for your many years of service. Over seven years ago, I, along with Sanford and other people, put into for the appointment where Gerald Bass was appointed to the city council. Obviously, everyone knows I was not selected.
We said no.
Mr. Bushnell was the one that had to call me that summer and let me know the board's decision. And that started a great relationship between us that has continued and grown. Your mentorship, your advice has been so valuable to me and so made me such a better person and a better board member. And the journey I've taken and my leadership started with you, and your encouragement has meant the world to me. You've done that, along with all the other challenges your life has had over the last seven years, which have not been easy. Someone who gives of themselves so selflessly deserves to be recognized for that. And I want you to know how much I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a lot harder than I thought it would be. I want to thank the citizens of Manassas who so hopefully elected me in 2010. Even though you wouldn't appoint me, they elected me. I have tried to work very, very hard for our school system and our city because it's the right thing to do. I've taken the responsibilities very seriously. I believe that public service is something that everyone has responsibility to give. Some of us have the opportunity to give more than others. I've been privileged to serve with many great people, not only those that are still here with me tonight, but others that have gone on. Mr. McGee, Mr. Dance, Mrs. Chavez. Great work has happened in the school system because of people that are willing to dedicate time to do this. And I'm grateful for all of that. I made the choice, and it was not an easy one, to run for city council because I wanted to try to serve everyone in the city. Though I want everyone to recognize that, to me, those who are elected and serve on the school board have some of the most important responsibility of any elected office, not just in this city, but in this country. You have the responsibility of many people's future. The decisions we have to make not just impact a budget or a textbook, but they impact the future of thousands of children every single day. I've tried to do that with much integrity, by doing my homework, and by asking lots of questions. I feel very privileged to move on to the city council. I hope to serve well there and continue to represent the city well. And yes, Mr. DiMaria, I will not be far, and I will hold you accountable. So thank you again. I want to thank the staff, Manassas City Public Schools. Know that I realize how hard each and every one of you work every single day. And you do that because you have a calling, a calling again, to help students be able to achieve that dream, to be the first of their families to go to college. I was the first in my family to go to college. And that would not have happened if it had not been for people like you. So thank you every day, when you come to work, to know that you're making the difference in a child's life. Because that's what I've tried to do every day that I've come to serve as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bushnell.
I have a tough act to follow. It's been my honor and my privilege to serve this city and its children for the last twenty-six and a half years. Think about that for a minute. I have been on this board as long as every child in this city who's in our schools has been alive. There's not a student in our schools who has been alive when I haven't been here. Maybe that's too long to serve, I'm not sure. But there's not a single board member, not a single current board member, who has been here without me. That I'm the presence, I think, that has rightly or wrongly provided institutional memory, which now passes on to my friend Scott. But I was thinking about, what kind of impact have we had? Have we as a group had? This board and the boards that have come previously? What have we done in the previous, in this time that I've been here? And there's a brief list, so bear with me, but these are the things that occurred to me. There are probably some things that are, should be on this list, and some things that maybe shouldn't be on this list. But in the time that I've been here, we added student members to the board, we added all-day kindergarten, we remodeled Weems and Hayden, we opened Metz, we rebuilt, remodeled, and completely changed the face of Osborne, as many of its alums pointed out to me at the time. We built Mayfield, we built what was then the Johnson Learning Center, it is now the Johnson Wing. We changed our grading alignments at our schools to better impact the educations of our students. We changed the grading system within our schools because we had been using a system that was being used against our kids when they tried to get into colleges. We created the governor's school at Innovation Park. The two things I'm most proud of, though, the two things that I think have the biggest impact and that I'm most proud of in all of the time that I've been here. The first one is the changes that we've made to the four-year-old program, and the changes that we've made with Footsteps to Brilliance, and the changes we've made to early education. We have become leaders in this state in providing education to four-year-olds in a way that's never been done before and that will impact the lives of the children of this city beyond the scope of what we could have hoped to do previously. We're going to educate more kids and have them more ready for kindergarten and more ready for school because we're doing this the right way. And because we found a way to have the state give us the use of state funds in a way that they've never been used before, maybe that'll happen in other cities. And maybe other four-year-olds will get a head start. And maybe other four-year-olds' lives will be changed because we've done that. So yes, I'm proud of that. I fought for that for two years and we got it done, and I'm extremely proud of it. The other thing that I'm very proud of is hiring this exceptional superintendent. This is the superintendent who is going to take us to the places that we know we can go. Her leadership and the staff that she's put together is remarkable. And it's been my privilege to serve with a number of superintendents. But you have made this extremely special and meaningful, and keep doing what you're doing because you do it the right way. Let me just say also to the staff, and not many of the staff are here, but we have an incredible staff. And this is a staff that touches children's lives every minute of every day of the school year, and they touch children's lives when they're not in the classroom. They make a difference. They make this school system what it is. Yes, we have exceptional kids. And yes, this is a wonderful city. But the staff here makes a difference. And they make an incredible difference. To the people who sit up here now and the people who've gone before, you know, my friend Doug Waldron stayed to see this, to see if maybe I'd tear up a little bit. And Doug, I still have the link that linked the mayor and the chairman. I will always keep that. It is dear to me. The people who are here now, Faith and Iris, you make a real difference being here. That your voices need to be heard, this board needs to hear the voices of our students, and you raise questions that would never occur to us. So always remember that you add a perspective that there is no wrong question, there isn't a bad question. You're thinking about things differently than we can ever hope to think. And you are our future. So we wish you both great success. Gets harder here. So my friend Sanford, you are this board's moral compass. You should always listen to this man, but when he takes the time to write something down, you know it's going to be profound, it's going to be from his heart, and it's going to be something that changes the way you think about things and changes your perspective of the world. You speak from your heart, it makes a difference, and it makes a difference on this board. Suzanne, in a very short time, you've stepped into a role that I think is always important. This board always needs someone to be our caretaker. Pam has been our caretaker, but she's moving on to another role. You've stepped into that, and I know that with you there, being the caretaker, that you'll make sure that we always have the parental perspective and that we always have care in what we do. Kristen, you come from a police family. You bring a certain sense, it's a multi-generational sense of right and wrong. And it's something that you add as a perspective that none of the rest of us are quite there with. And that right and wrong always makes a difference. We always want to be on the side of right, but it's important to also have people showing us what is wrong. Pam, you have become a close friend. You know, there was a joke that she had a husband and she had a board husband, and then she got the two of us together and sent us off to go to baseball games and things, so she'd have lots of free time. I'm not sure why that happened, but you and Bill have become extremely dear to me. I am so proud of who you are and what you have become, that to hear you speak tonight from your heart and to know that you are going to be a watchdog for this community and that you will be touching the lives of all of the citizens of this city, just having you there makes this a better city. Scott, before he had the eye surgery and before his Colonel Saunders beard, Scott and I looked a lot more alike than we do now. And there were times when one of us would be me and one of us would be mini-me, and that seemed to vary, and we'd be confused. And I think the superintendent still confuses us, and I don't know what she's going to call you now that I'm gone. But we have fought the good fight. We have fought the good fight together. Maybe we didn't always agree on some votes, but there was never something that mattered that we didn't agree on in our hearts and fight to our best to make it happen the right way. There were days when Scott and I came to this board, and we only had two votes, and we didn't know how we were going to get something done, and we ended up winning. And we'd look at it afterwards and say, not quite sure how that happened, but it did. Your fiscal awareness, your fiscal conservatism, your doctor know approach to the budget is an important part of what this board needs to do going forward. The institutional memory that you now have, that you're going to have to take, my role is the memory of this board. And I know that they're in good hands with that. Tim tries to fool you. Tim blusters, and he makes jokes, and he does this and that. Tim has an alter ego, and his alter ego is Timmy. And when Tim first got to the board, I think he wanted Timmy to be on the board. Tim reached within himself and found that there was an even better man than Timmy inside him, and that's the man that is our leader today. This board is held together by the leadership and guidance of Mr. Tim DiMaria. It's not Timmy, it's Mr. Tim DiMaria. I love all of the people that are up here, that I've served with. It's been my honor to serve with them. It wasn't always easy to serve. I've been called a few names, and over the years, I've been called probably some pretty harsh names. But I'm proud of what we've done together. I'm proud of what this board does as a board. And this board knows, I think, two profound truths about being on a school board. Every person sitting at this board tonight knows that together they are a board. They do not have individual power. We make decisions and we stand by the majority decisions because we are a board and we respect each other. And they also know the other profound truth about serving on this board, and that is, you can never do something wrong if you put the kids first. Don't put politics first, don't put special interests first. You have to put kids first, put all the kids first, and make the decisions from your heart and your mind that you know are best for the kids. As long as you do that, you don't need me anymore, and you'll be moving in the right direction. I served here for a lot longer than I ever thought possible. When I got on the board, Joe Johnson had served for, he was still serving, Joe and Marvin Gillum were my mentors. And when Joe reached 25 years, I thought, oh my goodness, nobody should ever serve that long. And I ended up serving longer. And I didn't think I would run last time after my wife was injured, but I felt like I continued to make a difference. So I ran, and I was happy that I won. I will miss this board. I will miss the work that we do together. I will miss my role in contributing to... I will miss my role in contributing to the education of the children, educations of the children of the City of Manassas. But you will all do well if you remember to put the kids first. And I heard you do have a vacancy that I might apply for.
Too late.
That was just a punchline. Nobody else needs to know that. So anyway, thank you all. Thank you for putting up with my ramblings. And thank you for making my years here special and meaningful to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, all right. And not only is Mr. Bushnell the longest-serving board member, he's also the longest elected official in the history of the City of Manassas. Okay. Public comment. I don't have anybody signed up. Does anybody like to speak? Okay. We'll move to public input on the CIP, 2018 CIP fiscal year. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget? Calm down, one at a time. Okay. I guess everybody's heard everybody speak too much. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, nothing. We'll move on to the discussion agenda. Virginia's new quality profiles. Mr. Line.
Good evening, Chairman D'Maria and Dr. McGorick, members of the board. This evening, I'm here to present an overview of Virginia's new state school quality profiles. Before I get started, to give you some background on it, as many people know, each year of the past several years, the State Department of Education publishes a school report card. And that school report card has the SOL pass rates, it has discipline data, teacher quality data, career in tech ed data, and so forth. And when they publish that, they publish it as a PDF document, digital paper document, and you can download and print it. Last year, the Virginia General Assembly directed the State Board of Education to redesign that, to improve communication to the parents and the community at large, to communicate more about the status and achievement of all the public schools in the state of Virginia. So over the past year, the State Board of Education, Virginia Department of Education, worked on developing this new school quality profiles. It's too many words, but, "school quality profiles." And that's what I'll present to you tonight. All right. Got to find my mouse. Some of the differences in the school quality profiles that you'll see here in a minute are the factors that they've included that the State Board of Education feel contribute to student learning. You'll see the tabs in a moment, and they will range from accountability, assessment, enrollment, college career readiness, finance, the learning environment, and teacher quality. Each one of those tabs have several different metrics underneath there. And one neat thing about the school quality profile website, it's interactive versus the old traditional school report card where it was a static PDF document. On this new platform, you'll be able to click on charts and graphs and drill down to usually a secondary level where you can see the numbers and kind of see what the story is behind each of those metrics. The school quality profile website, when we land on it here in a moment, starts from the state level, and then you can drill down into a division level and a school level. Now, on the slideshow here, I have the link. You can also go to the Virginia Department of Education website and find the link on the right-hand side to go directly to the website. Through the magic of technology, I already have it loaded. And this is what it looks like when you first land on the website. I'll zoom out a little bit so we can see it a little better. So when you land on the website, initially at the very top, you can enter in your school division name or your school, and you can query that report up right away. We'll do that in a moment. But first, I want to scroll down. Because when you first land on the landing page, the homepage, you immediately get to see a state snapshot of several different metrics. I'll zoom in here for you. And these are, you know, the items I listed on the slide a few moments ago. And I'll go over these in a couple moments, but I just wanted to show you, each one of these, you'll see a little plus sign. You can click on these to drill down, to see the state-level data down to the chart level and the hard numbers behind each one of these graphs. But we'll come back to this in a moment. I'll start showing these from our division level. So initially, you can type in "Manassas," and it'll bring up everything with that keyword, and you click on our school division. One thing, as a disclaimer, this is a great platform, and I think it really allows for greater transparency for all the citizens in Virginia. However, I am finding problems in their data. And you may find things, and it looks like an outlier, it's probably incorrect. I have, as I go through this every time, I find something new, and I let the state know. And I'll let you know a couple of these things as we go through. So here's our division profile. At the very top, you get our basic information, you get a hyperlink to our website and a map. But down here are the tabs I mentioned earlier. When you first land, you'll land on the snapshot, just like we did on the state landing page. And I'm going to save the snapshot for the end, because all of these metrics are under these tabs. So we'll start with accountability. In accountability, the first metric you come to is accreditation status. And it lets you know, you know, the green is the percentage of our schools fully accredited, and the blue would be the ones who are partially accredited, constituted school. Underneath each chart and graph, you'll have some options. Show an explanation where it defines what this graph is about. And then you can click the other one where it shows the numbers below... Bring that back up. It shows the numbers behind each of those colors. Seven fully accredited, one partially credited. And then this is the next metric in accountability, which is the federal graduation indicator. This metric here, I did find a problem in the data, and I've let them know. Under each one of these charts are filters. And these filters are real easy to click on them, and it filters the graph. If you go male, female, go to ethnicities. Just to point out something, when I clicked on students with disability, I noticed this. That's not right. We had more students with disabilities graduate than this little chart shows. So when I saw that, I said, "Well, let's look at the data." Along the top, when you look at these charts, you'll pay close attention to the years. As we go through here, you'll notice that this platform doesn't always show the same three years. Sometimes it shows the last, the most recent three years. Sometimes it shows three years, and they're two years behind from the 13, the 13-14. So it just depends on what data I think was available for the vendor when they built this platform. And we'll go through here, and I'll show you some of those. But as I went down through here, students with disabilities, it shows that only 12% of our students... That's not right. It's really random, you know, 58. You know, the state average is 53. We should be above that. So I've let the state know. But there's little things like that you'll come through this platform. It's brand-new. They just launched this, I think, at the end of October, early November. They did a soft launch, they didn't announce it, they just kind of let it organically grow. So there's still some things in here that need some attention. But I think the purpose and the framework that is built is pretty useful. So the next tab is assessments. And from, as soon as you land on here, you'll see here in a moment, it's all the four core areas. The first thing you can do, it just gives you an overview of all reading scores for the most recent three years, and you can see the years along the bottom. One thing I would stress is really pay attention to the font, because they're very small. As you see here, you know, this is almost like size eight font. You have to really pay attention to that. But you can drop this filter down and say, "Well, let's look at eighth grade," or, I'm sorry, "grade three English reading." And you can do that, you can log down, "Let's look at the high school, ELC High School. What does that look like?" And you can hover over the shades, and it'll tell you the percentages for those bands. Advanced, 13%, Division 60, state was 18 in advanced, and state proficient was 62. So it does have nice functionality. Again, under those graphs, you have the same filters as I showed you before. You just click on those and bounce through there and see how we compare against the state. Same thing with writing. Once again, you can filter on grade eight writing or end of course. And it'll show you the last three years, and then the filters as you apply. Once again, you can also look at the explanation of the data table itself, the numbers behind there, with math, science, and history. They all have the same functionality and the same filters. At the very last, and this is the kindergarten readiness, and this is one I wanted to point out. If you notice here, you just automatically, "Oh, this is 15-16." No, it's 14-15. It's two years ago. So you have to pay close attention to what you're looking at in these graphs, because this is not the most recent school year that we've closed out. But this uses the PALS information for the Louisiana Benchmark. Here, it does not have the filters, but you can still click on the data, the hard data underneath it, to look at that. And stop me if you have any questions, as I go from tab to tab, if you have any questions. The next one is enrollment. This is our fall, September 30th counts. Now, this is back to a 15-16 the last three years by grade level. This is another characteristic of the charts that I have a little heartburn about. It uses the shades of blue. And sometimes on these charts, there's two shades of blue that are very similar, and you'll see that become problematic when you're trying to differentiate what element you're looking at in that chart. This one isn't too bad. Here, you have a few filters. So for the enrollment, you only have the pie chart for fall membership and the last three years' trend data. The next tab is college career readiness. As you notice here, you'll have the division data on the left and the state data on the right. In a moment, and some other tabs, you have to pay close attention again. The state changes, that will flip it and put the state first and the division on the right. So sometimes you've really got to really pay attention to the labels. It doesn't seem to be consistent in every tab how they lay out the division with the state. So on here, the division's on the left and the state is on the right. As you see, some of these shades of blue start to get very close to one another as far as differentiating, like these two here. You look at standard and other diplomas, and over here, it's dropouts. They're almost virtually the same color of blue. You have to look real close, and it depends on your monitor, too, the quality of your monitor. And then again, you have your filters. Down here's on-time graduation rate. This is Virginia's official graduation rate. Then you have your filters. And here's another area I need to point out. This is the advanced program information. The very first element here says advanced placement test taken. And when you look at this, you see, and this is 15-16, 328, which is 15%. We gave more than 328 AP tests. So that's, this is labeled incorrectly. This should say advanced placement test takers or students, because we had 328 students take tests. Now, the next element says advanced placement course enrollment, which is the number of students taking AP courses. So there's probably a little duplication in there. But I just point these things out because in a minute, when I roll down to the bottom of this page, you'll notice, really, this should be students. I'll show how you know that. Postgraduate enrollment. Again, you've got to pay attention to the labels. Here, they jump back to 13-14 now. Automatically, you may want to think, "Oh, that's 15-16." So there's a lot of jumping back and forth in some of these metrics. The career tech ed credentials. And then we back, we jump back again to AP placement, participation, and achievement. Here, percentage of tests passed. All students. And the years here are laid out a little differently, they're on the left-hand side. But if we look here, number of test takers, 512. That's how I know that first metric is wrong, because they use the same label and they have two different numbers. So they, I've emailed them, so hopefully they'll fix it. Any questions on that one? So once again, to stress to our viewing public, if, when you go into this platform, it's very nice, but just pay close attention to the labels, the years, and what you're actually looking at, and the shades of different colors. Finance. Again, you have the division on the left, the state on the right, and notice the years, 14-15, 14-15. You can compare how the money is spent proportionally. Your filters here are by the years. Then you have division per pupil spending. Again, it's division compared to the state. And the filters are the same on those. Learning climate. Here, you'll see metrics about attendance, all students. The attendance rate, and again, you have your filters. The percentage of students absent in 15-16s. And here again, you'll see this huge color blue and this little sliver blue are almost identical. And when you come down to the key, you may confuse students who have missed between 15 to 20% of the year and students who have missed less than 10%. Those two categories are virtually the same color. So you hover over them to figure out which one is which. The larger blue is students who have missed less than 10%. But if you're not paying attention and you just quickly match these two little colors, you may think, "Oh, jeez, that's the wrong category." So just have to pay real close attention, especially with the small fonts on top of Then you have the standards of accreditation, SOA. This is discipline data that we're getting into now. As you notice, that one doesn't have any filters on it. And the year is 14-15. Again, it's very small. The year's 14-15. The years do jump around. Short-term suspension, we're back to 15-16 now. And this is where, now, for some reason, the platform flips. Before, the division data was on the left and the state was on the right. I'm sorry, I take that back. Here, this is confusing, because the first chart you see is the percentage of our September 30th population. Some people may automatically think short-term suspensions, that this is representing suspensions. It's not. This first bar chart is showing our percentage of population among those races. Over here is the percentage of short-term suspensions that received along those subgroups. So you just have to pay close attention to what you're looking at when you're looking at these graphs and comparing left to right. For example, like here's a good example, long-term suspensions. If you looked at the first set of bar charts, you're going to think, "Holy cow, what's that light blue? There's 60% of them are getting locked in." No, that's our overall student population. And it's labeled, but it's labeled very small underneath the bar chart. So you have to pay close attention to that. Over to the right is the actual percentage of long-term suspensions among those subgroups. And same thing for expulsions. Then we get into free and reduced lunch, free and reduced meal eligibility for 15-16, free reduced breakfast participation of eligible students, and free and reduced lunch participation of eligible students in 15-16. Then the last tab is teacher quality. Here, you'll see the student teacher ratio of the last, for 13-14. And the teacher educational attainment, as far as what type of degrees they have from last year, from 15-16. The licensure for our teachers. And the last one here is the percentage of core academic classes taught by teachers in their doorstep, are taught by teachers not meeting the federal definition of highly qualified. And the year there is 14-15. That chart will change now because of Title I's changing with their ESU, and pretty soon it'll be endorsed, not highly qualified. So that takes you through all the tabs. So if we go back to the snapshot, all of these metrics on the snapshot view, if I click on the little plus, it will drill me down into that metric under the tab that it is housed. That's why I wanted to show you a snapshot last, because that's, it'll just jump you That's why I wanted to show you a snapshot last, because that's, it'll just jump you to that tab where that metric lives. Over here, you'll see tabs over here. This is for your social media. You can actually embed these reports into other areas if you want to, if the end user wants to, or email them to somebody. Are there any questions?
You know, I've got to have a couple. Mr. Lash, you mentioned there's a vendor, which implies to me there's a defined scope and contract. Has the state publicized a plan on how they're gonna maintain the data, keep it current? I mean, you're identifying issues as an example.
No. But they, they have provided us a link to provide feedback, where if we find something, we can report it.
So, my observation is, they obviously went to the low bidder, because there's data integrity issues. You talked about the color and the layout design to poor human factors element. The American Disability Act specifically for taxpayer money being used for websites and stuff, actually, I think it's section 508, has specific requirements that I don't know if it complies with. So, someone ought to tell the state, and I'd be glad to pass that message on if I'm right. I think I'm right.
I think you're right, too.
And it just baffles me that you're finding errors and there's no plan to update it, and yet, we expect people across the Commonwealth, the city of Manassas, and for that matter, the nation, to go and say, this is like GoodSchool.com. It's good, it must be, it must be true, it's on the internet.
It's GreatSchools.com, by the way, not GoodSchools.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to give anybody an publicity stunt.
They're not great, they're not even good, but it's called GoodSchools.
So, I guess it was more of a, an opining than a question, so. But if they don't have a plan to fix it, let me know, and I'll see if I can't get VSBA to look in and say, because that obviously affects every single school system in the Commonwealth, and you can't be alone having these problems.
I can, I'll certainly follow up with them and see what the plan is, and I can find out and communicate back to Dr. Morgan and get the word out to all of you what the plan is for them. So I'm, I'm sure they have one somewhere.
Yeah, I believe that.
Because I think the platform has, has really good intent, and I think it has a lot of potential. And I, I did find out one data, a little anomaly, but I hear you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Baldwin Construction Update.
Did you break it?
No, I don't know what to say.
Mr. Hawkins.
Good afternoon, Chairman de Mary and PALS Superintendent, School Board members. Just wanted to give you, uh, some of you tonight discussed about Baldwin. It's close to completion and about the upcoming events, so I wanted to give you just a little slideshow of where we've been and where we are now. I want to go down. So this is where we started. This is what the old school board office and the ball fields looked like when we, when we first started it, um, it, on the project. It really has, uh...
And that dirty spot was the trailers that got removed.
That's right. Well, believe it or not, the next slide actually has the trailers in there. I'm not sure why. I was hopeful this thing was gonna work better. So if you can, you can see now what, what a big difference we've, we did when we started moving it out in May of two thousand and fifteen. We see the progress, uh, going forward. Finally, we see a building coming out of the ground. So I'll just scan through these and show you, you can see the progress that has been made at that, that job site over, over the period of time. We've come a long way in a short period of time, and we're very proud of the new school.
Sort out just a little bit, Mr. Hawkins.
Oh, am I going too fast? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I went faster.
There you go. That a boy. Thank you.
I was hopeful I could use my button here and it would, it would be better. I only got some brick on the, coming up on March. Building's finally taking good shape. So now we're coming to where we have a, have a brand-new school and what it looks like today. So it's very, you know, it's a beautiful school, wonderful accomplishment for the school board and the, for the children of the school division. So there, there we are, November two thousand and sixteen. So what's next? Chairman mentioned that we were gonna have community tours on the nineteenth, starting five o'clock. We'd like to invite all, all the community there. Please come. We will have, um, uh, people there who will be your tour guides, and, um, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting with the students on December the twentieth at eleven o'clock in the gym. And then, during the winter break, we will be moving in, have the movers bringing, bringing stuff over. I think on the, I think it's the twenty-second, twenty-third, even though we do have, or division is closed on the twenty-third, that will, movers will be moving, um, items over from Old Baldwin to New Baldwin. And then, my staff, myself, and the principal, and the teachers, all will be over there during winter break, being, getting the school ready to be fully operational for the first full day of school on January the third. So if we have any questions, concerns?
Are there any questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
It's been a long time coming, thank you.
It has been a long time, yep. I need something.
Mr. Hawkins, do you want to also, one of the things that our, our Baldwin parents need to know is that those, their students will start their day at the Old Baldwin and finish their day at New Baldwin. So the buses will take them home from New Baldwin, and their parents, any parents that do, car riders, will actually drop off in the morning at Old Baldwin and pick up their children in the afternoon at New Baldwin. And in doing so, you know, we didn't want our children going the whole Christmas holiday with not having the opportunity to, um, be in their building and not worrying about, what is my building gonna look like when I start back January the third? So they'll actually be starting their first full day, but they will have had that experience with their teachers, in their classroom, and the school won't be totally foreign to them. And so I want to thank our staff. They've really worked hard with our, with the construction company and Mosley Architects to make this happen for our kids next Tuesday.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
One question, because it's kind of late, Harvey. Mr. Hawkins, why do we decommission Old Baldwin? And we get them a party, like, who gets to swing sledgehammers and start knocking it down?
Well, that's up to you.
I want to part of that party.
I'd say I do want to have volunteers.
Sorry, you're going.
So Old Baldwin will be, we'll be leaving Old Baldwin. The students, of course, will be leaving for the final time on the twentieth, and all the teacher stuff will be moved over no later than the twenty-third. So the, the, we're going to get to the demo contract tonight, and hopefully the school board will approve that, uh, that contract. But the schedule now is that, I think, January twenty-fifth, they will begin abatement procedures at the school, and then, um, the first of February, I've got it on a short chart when we get there, but it's around the first of February, they will start, um, um, the demolition process, and they will be completed by March twenty-fifth. And we will then switch to, uh, the final phase, which is the Gillum Field relocation process. So that's, that's the general, uh, way going forward. And we could have a, uh, we could put the superintendent on the bulldozer, she can push the first wall down or something like that, if you'd like.
No, no, we can't.
Can't do that?
No.
Get a backhoe or something.
You're like a bake sale, you know? Bid on the right to put the bulldozer through the, yes, see? See? Dr. McGork and I both are thinking of bidding on it.
That's where we are.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the leverage. Mr. Hawkins, as a parent of students that were at Baldwin, um, who are now grown, many of the students at that school have had stars put on the walls, and I'm asking this question because it is the most asked question about the whole thing from the students, is what's happening with the stars? Do you know what's happening with the stars at Baldwin?
I know the principal, Mrs. Golzon, has been in, um, working out that with the community. I'm not sure, um, what they've, what the final outcome of that is at, at this time, but I know that the principal, it's been working closely with the family and the community to, um, to make the appropriate choice. Those stars will be a part of the school in some way, some fashion.
That's the question they had, because the students were really anxious that...
And that tradition will continue.
That if they, if they were gonna be destroyed, they wanted them. You laugh, students go back over there with their caps and gowns and take pictures by those stars.
We do.
It's, it's kind of crazy, but I'm right, right, guys?
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you, sir.
I think they might be done. Yeah. Okay. GCDAM, effect of criminal conviction or founded complaint of child abuse or neglect revision.
I'm actually going to...
Ms. Winfield, is this you?
Mm, yes, sir.
Hopefully it's not me.
Um, what we added, um, and we add...
You get to get up and talk pretty to us.
We just added one sentence to the policy. It has been our practice, um, not to allow an individual to begin employment until a criminal background has been received by the Department of Human Resources and reviewed. So we thought it would be a good idea just to make it official, so our practice, not much as our policy.
Mr. Chair, if I might, as chair of the Policy Committee, that's why this policy's, um, a VSBA policy, but the M means it's modified, because this is our practice in our division. It may not necessarily be a statewide practice, but we think it's a good practice, and your Policy Committee does recommend that this policy go forward. This is the first reading, so next month, it, at our first, at your first meeting, it will be on the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Action Agenda, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two CIP. Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Chairman, we've, we've been talking about the capital improvement plan for the last several months. We have not made any changes since our, um, since the budget work session that we had several weeks ago. I'm not sure how much time you wanted to devote to this tonight, and whether, just, I guess I want to start with asking the board, do they have any questions, concerns about the proposed five-year capital improvement plan?
Thank you, sir. Uh, can we get a motion first?
Mr. Chair, move it.
Do I have the right one here?
Mr. Chair, move adoption of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, uh, school, School Board of the City of Manassas Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Second.
That close to it, sir?
Yeah, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the proposed site lease a, no, wait, am I on the wrong one?
Wrong one.
Everybody calm down. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the twenty eighteen, twenty-two CIP plan as presented. Is that good for both of you? All right, are there any comments or questions before we go on? And did you have anything else present, since you presented this the last eight meetings we've been at?
Like I was gonna say, last three years, right.
No one else? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebesky, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the twenty eighteen, twenty-two CIP as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Um, I guess you're gonna stay right there?
Yes.
Proposed Mets Middle School cell tower. Mr. Hawkins.
I've got, um, Mr. David Goldspit from Milestone Communications here. At the last school board meeting, we made, uh, we had a presentation regarding putting a cell tower at Mets Middle School. The cell, a tower will be in the centerfield fence area of the ball field at Mets, and we're replacing a, a light pole that's already there, a stadium pole, and they will be putting a, the proposal is that we would put a cell tower in that place and put the lights back on the pole. Since we've already had this presentation last month, are, are there any questions, concerns? I haven't heard any comments from anyone in the community. I haven't had no board member comments throughout this last period of time. In the interest of time, I don't know if you want to go through the presentation again.
Hang on one second. Mr. Albrecht, do you want to make a motion here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the proposed site lease agreement for the construction of a wireless telecommunications facility on the Mets Middle School property contingent upon zoning approval.
Second. All right. At this point, I see no purpose in going through the whole procedure unless, uh, pro, uh, presentation again unless somebody else does. Uh, we've been through this several times as well. Anyone?
I just want to iterate again, we have been through it in public, and I heard Mr. Hawkins say it, but I want to say it again, no one from the community contacted you about it.
No, but I would, I want to say that the next steps going forward would be, that we will go through zoning with the, with the schools, I mean, with the city. But the, one of the most important things is the next steps that will be going on at the same time that they go through zoning, is that they're gonna be reaching out to the community. They're going to be notifying all the people around Mets Middle School. They're gonna set up a website, um, for them. They're gonna have a community meeting to try to receive community input.
Okay.
So it's not stopping here tonight. Even though we're proving them to go forward, that we, we're still seeking out community input in, for this cell tower at Mets Middle School.
So we're really authorizing the vendor to work with the city to begin the engagement through the, the zoning process.
Yes, right.
And as presented the last time and the first time, the halo of where they're going to be contacting residents is quite large around Mets, so...
And see, Milestone Communications already has a relationship with the city. They already have dealt with them in the past, um, and so we, we think that that will move along quick, quickly.
Right.
But we do want to stress that we're not just leaving it here tonight without, in receiving or seeking community input, uh, on, on this project.
Right. And I think it's good that we're going out and reaching out to the community, not just waiting for them to come to us, or at least you are. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding that the city already has worked with Milestone, and there are already towers located from you in the city, correct?
Yes. Anyone else? I have a motion from Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the proposed site lease agreement for the construction of a wireless telecommunications facility on the Mets Middle School property contingent upon... upon zoning approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Contracts over $100,000. Mr. Hawkins, good to see you.
Good to see me again, right? So the next, so we had, we show you the bid results from the demo project for Old Baldwin. The projected cost from our consultants were, they estimated it was gonna cost $537,000, almost $538,000. The bid opening date was on November the 2nd, and you can see the bid results. And so tonight, we're asking for permission to sign a contract with the low bidder, which is Demolition Services. This vendor was also the vendor that we've had prior experience with, as far as they're the ones that demoed the old school board office. The abatement, like I said earlier, the abatement process would begin on January 25th. The demolition would begin on December the 13th, and the project would be complete on March 22nd. And then we will, hopefully, well, the bid documents will be open for the Gillum Field project on January the 5th. We will have a recommendation to the school board for a contract for the Gillum Field on the last meeting in January, and that project will begin on April the 1st to replace the Gillum Field project. So right after this project is complete on March 22nd, somewhere around April the 1st, the Gillum Field project will begin. So we're asking for permission tonight to go forward with the low bid with Demolition Services.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the award for IFB-17-05 Demolition and Asbestos Remediation at Baldwin Elementary School to Demolition Services Incorporated of Culpeper, Virginia, in the total amount of $430,555.
Second. Do we have any discussion questions? You ready?
No.
Good?
Actually, sir, only 'cause Mrs. Sibeski brought it up.
It's usually her fault.
I know.
You'll have to find somebody else soon.
I will.
I guess staff is doing something. Something tells me the stars are probably on bricks, and who knows how remove them, and y'all are gonna figure that out, and everybody will be happy before the bulldozer or whatever, the wrecking ball comes on the middle of February.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, all right.
So a committee has been in place for about the last three months, and it is former students, current PTA members, the school administration, some teachers, and they've been talking about the stars. Our problem in the new building is that there aren't many concrete walls. And so they were to go over and look to make that decision. One of the things that has been discussed is plaques that would have the stars on them, so they wouldn't take up so much space, because finding that much space, unless they use the gym, there isn't any room for the stars. But we do know that that's very, very important to our students and to the families. There's a lot of history in Baldwin. There's been lots of discussions about how do they get to participate in the demolition of the building? There's been all kinds of things. And we are moving at this pace of allowing the committee to make some decisions and work through it. We're not, I guess we don't have a final decision yet, and so I can talk with the principal to see where they are right now.
Thanks. All right. If the stars are aligned, we will continue. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the award for IFB-17-05 Demolition and Asbestos Remediation at Baldwin Elementary School to Demolition Services Incorporated, Culpeper, Virginia, in the amount of $430,555. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Grievance procedure, professional staff. Mrs. Sibeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The policy committee met on December the 8th to discuss this policy. GBM is a policy regarding the grievance procedures for professional staff. Just to give you a little bit of background, before 2013, the grievance procedures were done through a fact-finding process. Then in 2013, it was put forward that there needed to be either a hearing officer or the school board handle these grievance procedures. At that time, the school board and the members of the board decided that they did not wish to use a hearing officer, but for themselves to act in the grievance process. That's how we have handled things until November 30th of this year, at which time we received, the school system received a letter where they finally had made some decisions about this process. And that's where this policy, GBM, comes from. When the policy committee met, we were under the belief that we could enact using a hearing officer or the board as determined at some point. Since then, we have sought further legal advice, and our attorney has told us that we can not really do that without setting ourselves up for potential issues. So it is recommended that we tonight decide if we wish to, as a board, continue to be the ones handling the grievance procedures that come through from staff, including dismissal, or do we wish to employ a hearing officer to handle this? Keeping in mind that if a hearing officer is employed, the hearing officer, if the staff member is unhappy with the outcome, it would still have to come to the school board. Now, the only thing this board does need to recognize is, and please, it's 30 days, correct? When they file a grievance, that they have to meet with the board? Yeah. So this board, as we've had to do in the past, has to recognize that they would have to agree that if something comes forward, they have to make it, find a way within 30 days as a board to meet with this employee. So it is my recommendation, I can't say from the committee, because when the committee met, our recommendation was to give levity in this and allow it to either be the board or hearing officer, because, like I said, we had not got the legal advice that we have now. So I'm asking for some discussion before our motion is made tonight. We do need an action item on this, because it went into effect November 30th. It was sent out and put into effect on the same day. So that's why this is not being done in our normal process. So like I said, in the past, this board has always said that they wished to not employ a hearing officer, that they did not want a barrier between the board and the staff, and wish therefore going to handle the grievance. So before we put the motion forward, I don't know if there's any discussion. If not, my recommendation after the discussion with our legal advisor would be if this board is willing to, to not use a hearing officer, but to continue with the process that we have used over the last three years. I'm happy to make that motion, but I didn't know if we wished to have any discussion prior.
Mr. Albrecht?
I want to second our motion.
Well, let's make a motion.
Yeah, then go ahead and do it.
Make a motion.
And you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And as presented, you presented that we go without a hearing officer, correct? That's what you're presenting?
Right. I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised policy GBM-M Grievance Procedure Professional Staff as I presented tonight. Just to clarify, that means it's the board, not a hearing officer. It's in your computer.
That's fine.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Absolutely.
Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Bushnell, please.
What's the difference between GBM and GBMM? What's the modification?
The modification is...
Would you let me do?
Yes.
If you use GBM, GBM means that you will be using a hearing officer, or you would vary depending on what the board wished to do, which our attorneys have said you need to either go one way or the other, because some people would not understand why they would have a hearing officer and not have the board. So GBM is, as it's written, with a hearing officer. GBMM is stating that the School Board of the City of Manassas elects not to use a hearing officer. So that means that the board would be handling, would be functioning in the same way that it always has.
Okay.
So my thought process, and you're quickly wanting to second it, is we're halfway through an academic year. We have to try to figure out who the hearing officer would be. This is not an irrevocable decision. A board of future time could change this policy, lets immediately put a policy in place, as the board does what we've been doing for the last three years, and not do something silly. And if we need to reevaluate it, a future board can always do that.
Anyone else?
The policies do or should be being reviewed every three years. That's something that this board, we undertook three years ago. And all of your policies, as we go into this new year, are up to date and have been reviewed by this board or within three years. So yes, it's not something that can't be changed at a future time if the board decides that they're, that's what they want to do.
Anyone else? A motion by Mrs. Sibeski, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised policy GBM-M Grievance Procedure Professional, Profession Staff as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. And I believe our...
Close session?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemption of open meetings, as allowed by Section 2.23711. Oh, wrong one. Section 22.1277.2-1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose: discussion of student appeal. I also move the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemption of open meetings, allowed by Section 2.23711, Part 8, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, for discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1617-0335 and 1617-0349.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the School Board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.1-277.2
Yeah, it's a weird number.
Semi-colon, or colon, 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose: discussion of a student appeal. And that the School Board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by 2.23711, Part 8, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1617-0335 and PERS 1617-0349. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0.